Thank you. Thank you very much for taking the time to come out. I know it's a Razorback Sunday. I know we played early and it wasn't what we would necessarily like. I wish I had good news to tell you about Obamacare to brighten the day, but unfortunately, I don't. I'll give you a quick update on where things stand with Obamacare, you know, latest news of the last few days. And then I want to talk some about where we are more broadly with the law and what I think is going to happen going forward. I've also, as Lisa said, asked everyone to complete questions. If you have a question, you got a card, feel free to complete it while I'm speaking and hand it to them. That gives us a chance to evaluate all the questions based on the number of asking so we can make sure the most common questions are getting addressed. And also, for those who couldn't be here, we received a lot of questions over last week on Facebook and on Twitter. So first, the update about Obamacare, where things are standing today. It's November 23rd, so we are a week away from the administration's self-imposed deadline to have healthcare.gov working for the vast majority of Americans. Is that going to happen?
No.
I suspect not. Most independent experts, whether they're computer programmers, whether they are project managers, say that it will not likely happen. Henry Chow, who's a career employee of the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services, by all accounts a beautiful public servant there, has said that 30 to 40 percent of healthcare.gov isn't even built yet. Not un-repaired, but isn't even constructed yet. And I just don't see how that deadline is going to be met by next Saturday. In fact, administration officials are beginning to say, on background in the media, that it's not going to be some big event, you know, it's going to be kind of a rolling process, which means it's not going to be a big event of success. In fact, they are even saying that it'll be working smoothly for 80 percent of all Americans, which is kind of like the Yogi Bear standard. For those of you who like baseball, you know, Yogi was a Hall of Fame catcher for the New York Yankees, who had a tendency to misspeak a little bit. So to summarize him in this case, the website will work 800 percent of the time, 80 percent of the time. But it does seem to be getting a little bit better right now. You probably saw the data that came out about the month of October. In October, there were about 100,000 so-called enrollments in Obamacare. That's about 75,000 in states like California or Kentucky that built their own websites and 25,000 through the federal healthcare.gov. Now, they're counting as an enrollment anybody who has put a plan in their checkout basket, even though they haven't actually signed up with a plan and paid for it, which is kind of like saying that the people who have put a shotgun or a TV on layaway at Walmart are already the proud owner of the shotgun or the TV at Walmart. But the numbers out from earlier, the earlier this month, the first 15, 20 days of this month, say that about 20,000 or 23,000 people have enrolled this month, which isn't much, but I guess it's better to have that number in half a month than it is a full month, even though it still means that there were fewer people enrolled through healthcare.gov as a mid-November than there were seats today in War Memorial for the game against Mississippi State. In particular, when you think that the administration had predicted that 500,000 people would be enrolled at the end of October. And when you remember that they said 7 million enrollees need to come into the system by March 31st. And remember, that's 7 million net new enrollees. So that's minus the at least 5 million Americans, or probably a lot more than that, who've had their healthcare canceled in the last month. Then just yesterday, we got news of two more delays of the Obamacare implementation deadlines, which are always a great sign of success and moving forward with good momentum. The first delay is going to occur in January. So enrollees were supposed to be into the system by December 15th if they wanted coverage by January 1. That's now been delayed until December 23rd, so it's the day before Christmas Eve, which means that those people who are looking for healthcare, perhaps because Obamacare canceled their own, will have only eight days to include two federal holidays to get their healthcare verified and be able to pay for it. Likewise, insurers will have only eight days to include federal holidays to make sure that they actually have coverage. Doesn't sound to me like a recipe for success if you get sick on New Year's Eve from partying too much. The second deadline is next year, the open enrollment period for next year. We're scheduled to begin on October 15th, as a lot of open enrollment periods do. We now know almost a year in advance that the administration has decided to postpone the open enrollment period from October 15th to November 15th. They say that they need to do so because the website has been so slow, therefore young people are not enrolling right now. They expect more young people to enroll in February or March, and they need more time to evaluate how many people are in the system and what the risk pool looks like to properly price the 2015 plans. I'm sure the fact that the election occurs on November 4th, which is 11 days before November 15th, not 25 days after October 15th, has nothing whatsoever to do with that sort of delay. So anyway, that's kind of the latest news on Obamacare's glowing successes. But I want to take a step back now and kind of look at a high level of what it's done to our healthcare system already and also what that predicts of what it will do. I would say that there are currently four big shocks that we've seen, or that we very soon will see, related to Obamacare. That's the website, the cancellations, the sticker shock, and access shock, or what you might call the doc shock. So we can just go through those briefly. The website obviously is a fiasco. If any of you have tried to enroll on the website or just browsed the website briefly as I have, as you might have seen John Maynard did a couple of days ago, you know that it's still operating at $19.98 standards in many cases, if you can get on at all. Part of this, increasingly, it's becoming clear as we have more oversight hearings in the House or the press reports on what was happening, is the administration continued to stick its head in the sand, continued to deny that they had problems, oftentimes because they didn't want to have political problems by either having to delay Obamacare, or admit that they were running over budget, or admit that the functionality of the website wouldn't be ready by October 1. One example of this is they refused to hire a project coordinator outside of the government or appoint a single person inside the government to do so. They had the employees within the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services implementing a very complex IT project, probably as complex an IT project as the federal government has ever attempted to implement, maybe on the scale of any major corporation's significant IT projects. I'm sure that CMS has a lot of dedicated public servants that are good at the jobs they perform, but trying to implement dozens of IT systems into one single integrated system, including state governments, is just not within the skill set of anyone inside that agency. You know, when I was in the Army, I was trained as infantrymen. My soldiers and I were trained to kick indoors and shoot bad guys and roll them up and take them to detention centers. We weren't trained to fly helicopters. It would be as if you were trying to give us a helicopter and say, "Go out and fly this on the battlefield." You have people within the government or people within the private sector have certain skill sets, and you put them in the places where they can succeed and help your project to succeed. The administration refused to do so largely because they didn't want the political problems that such actions could involve. So what have we seen besides just the slow website now and the continued delays? We've also seen a project that was flawed going back to March, we now know, from oversight hearings earlier this week. They were being warned that they had all these flaws, yet they didn't take any action to try to resolve them. We also know that no one has yet lost their job over this. No one inside the government has been held accountable. Of course, the ultimate person who's accountable is not someone within the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services. It's not Catherine Sivilius. It's Barack Obama. And he sometimes claims that he is responsible for it and that he's going to be held accountable. But to date, he's done nothing that would contribute the idea that he has a sense of urgency to actually express the sense of regret he has for the damage he's implemented on our healthcare system and on millions of Americans. What do you see in the system itself besides the slow enrollment times or the long wait times that you all have? You hear reporters or you hear insurers giving reports of what's happening on the backend of the system, which we as consumers don't see. So for instance, continued examples of enrollment, cancellation, enrollment, cancellation, enrollment, cancellation. For those of you that have been on Amazon or Travelocity, you know that's probably just people being logged on the system because it crashes, or it takes too long on a single page, or they hit the back button on their browser, or they hit the forward button on their browser, and they don't know if they have insurance or not. Reports of people with multiple husbands and multiple wives. Do we really think that that many people with two or three husbands or wives are enrolling in Obamacare? No. Surely, it's one spouse and multiple children. Or you just see the failure of any confirmation to come from the insurer to the consumer because the backend systems are not transmitting information in a understandable and usable format from the consumer, who thinks he or she has insurance, which is going to be in for a rude surprise on January 1 when they realize they haven't been billed and they haven't received an insurance card. Hopefully, they won't be going through any kind of medical treatment on that day. You've also seen a lot of security breaches and privacy risks. This has been in the television news a lot. You've seen the examples probably of individuals' personal information, addresses or names, maybe even more personal data than that, like financial information or social security numbers, being pulled up in a Google search window if you know the right string of characters to type in. You've seen examples in The Washington Post or even in more liberal magazines or online websites of how hackers have been able to go onto the website and recreate certain features of it that makes it look like it's official, but really if you click on them, it just puts a virus on your computer and tracks the information you're putting in to your identity. There's the story of the doctor, I think it was in Florida, whose personal information was sent to another doctor in North Carolina. Everything, name, address, the security number, tax information, and so forth. In fact, the House Energy and Commerce Committee or the Government Oversight Reform Committee, I forget which one exactly, is going to be having a hearing over there to address that very topic. And this is not something that just Republicans are pointing out, although we certainly are. Mike Rogers is the Republican chairman of the House Intelligence Committee. He is an expert on cybersecurity because that's one of the most significant threats we base from overseas. He has called on the website to be taken down until we can have adequate testing from end to end to ensure that we don't have risk to people's personal data and privacy. Okay, Mike's a Republican. Dianne Feinstein, the liberal senator from California, who is the chair of the Senate Intelligence Committee, has also called for the website to be taken down and to have the same kind of end-to-end testing to ensure personal information is secure and protected. So the website is still not doing very well. Appears to have sped up a little bit over the last couple of weeks. In the end, though, I tend to say that the president, for once, is right when he says that Obamacare is more than a website. Now, I think he means that once the website is fully functional, Americans will realize what a great gift Obamacare was to them. I mean it, though, in the regard that once the website is fully functional, Americans will only begin to see the kind of pain that Obamacare is inflicting on them. This brings us to the second big shock, the cancellations. I bet in an audience this size in here in Hunts Springs, somebody's had your policy canceled, your individual policy canceled, either yours or maybe a family member. There's been reportedly to date about 5 million in the country. Estimates projected could be as high as 15 million. That's the figure the president and his administration keeps using, 5 percent of the population. You know, and at first, the president was saying that, you know, these were substandard plans, that they were deficient, that they were sold by bad apple insurers, that they were more like house insurance than health insurance. But I guess the political heat got too intense for him. Since last Thursday, he did a 180. He went from calling these substandard plans to saying that insurers could continue to offer them and people could stay enrolled in them. And that's because, obviously, he wanted to finally, once and for all, in just some small way, honor his promise, which he made over and over and over again, that if you liked your plan, you can keep it. Well, some people have said the president was lying. I would give the president the benefit of the doubt and say he probably just misspoke, misspoke dozens of times. What he meant, I think what he meant was, "If I like your plan, you can keep it." Because, because this is not, these cancellations are not a bug of Obamacare. They are a feature of Obamacare. This is the way the law is designed. This is not an unintended consequence of the law. This is very much the intended consequence of Obamacare. It is designed on the premise that you don't know what is best for you and your family, what health insurance policies fit your needs, and what fits within your budget. Therefore, Barack Obama and his liberal allies and all the bureaucrats in Washington are going to dictate to you what's best for you. They're going to tell you what products you can take and can't take, even if you don't want them and don't want to pay them. That's why so many people are having their health insurance policies canceled. I mean, I have a couple, married couple that goes to church with me in Darnell. He's a dentist and his wife runs the office. And they have, had an individual market plan. They lost that plan. One of the reasons they lost that plan is their health insurance didn't cover maternity care and pediatric vision and pediatric dental care. They're 56 or 57 years old. They've got three grown children. They have grandchildren. They don't want to pay for that. They don't want it. Take a gentleman like my grandfather, passed away three years ago. To my knowledge, my grandfather never touched a drop of alcohol his entire life. When I look back on the way we acted when we were there on Thanksgiving and Christmas, I'm somewhat surprised he didn't do that. But he didn't touch a drop of alcohol his entire life, to my knowledge. And he certainly didn't use any kind of drugs. But under Obamacare, someone like that has to pay for substance abuse treatment and counseling and other programs, even though they don't want it, even though they can't afford it. Again, this is not a flaw in the design of Obamacare. This is the way Obamacare is designed. It's designed to force people to pay more into a system for something they don't want, to subsidize other people. And when you look at it like that, what is it really but a hidden tax increase on millions and millions of Americans? Now, that's why you're losing policies in the individual market. Because people had a lot more opportunities to shop for what fit their needs in the individual market than in the small group market for small businesses, as I know a lot of you work at or maybe own yourself, or the larger group market at big companies that have large pools of employers. But I've got some bad news for you. If you're in those group plans, you're not exempt from these cancellations. They may not be happening yet, but they're going to be coming for the exact same reasons. Because Obamacare dictates to both small groups and large groups the level of benefits that you have to take. It changes the way insurance plans are rated and adjusts it from an actuarial standpoint. It may not have happened yet, but it is going to happen. I'm not just predicting this. I'm not pulling that idea out of thin air. I'm quoting the Obama administration, and it's important enough to know that I wrote it down. This comes from the Federal Register, where the federal government announces its new rules and regulations in June of 2010. Small group plans, fewer than 100 employees. This is three months after Obamacare passed. Same regulation that's causing millions of Americans to lose their health insurance in the individual market right now. Small group plans. The low estimate of plans that will be lost were substantially changed. 49 percent, half of them. The high-end estimate, 80 percent, four-fifths of all small group plans. And the medium estimate, which lets you give them the benefit of the doubt, 66 percent. Two-thirds of all small group health insurance plans will be lost or substantially altered by Obamacare. What about large groups, 100 employees or more? Low-end, 34 percent, over a third. High-end, 64 percent, two-thirds. The middle-range estimate, 45 percent. Almost half of all large group employees' plans will be lost or substantially changed. All the cause of Obamacare's dictates. You know, this is not something that was unknown. Senator Kirsten Gillibrand, a liberal senator from New York, said last week on TV on Sunday morning that we all knew this was going to happen. Of course, they knew. They said it in June of 2010. And they had a chance in September of 2010 to change it. Mike Enzi, a senator from Wyoming, proposed legislation in the Senate that voted to block this exact regulation that is causing millions of Americans to lose their health insurance and may ultimately cause tens of millions of Americans to lose it. Block this exact regulation. And every single Democrat in the Senate voted to keep the regulation in place. They didn't just vote for Obamacare. They voted for the specific regulation that has cost millions of Americans their health insurance and that may cost tens of millions of Americans their insurance. Well, what's happening to all those people who lose their insurance or who are ultimately going to? This brings us to the third big shock, the sticker shock of Obamacare. Now, I bet a lot of you have experienced this already, whether you're in the individual market, whether you've gone to the exchange and waited for the 18 hours necessary to complete the process, or whether you are renewing either as an employee at your business or maybe you're an employer and you're getting your renewal notices. Premiums in Arkansas, around the country, are going up by several multiples, two, three, four times. Deductibles and copayments are going up. Other kinds of policies are being lost. I'll give you an example that I read in my local newspaper just a couple of weeks ago. A gentleman named Jerry Buckley from Marion, over in eastern Arkansas, had a individual plan. Jerry's deductible, I'm sorry, his premium was $400 a month. It will now be $600 a month, 50 percent increase. His deductible is going from $7,500 to $8,000. Now, you might say that it's only $500 increase, but that's still quite a bit. More importantly, his copayment after his deductible is hit goes from 0 percent to 30 percent for all costs. And he had 80 percent coverage for all dental and all vision. Now, he has nothing. These are stories I've heard repeated all across Arkansas that I read from all around the country. I read a story today about a nurse in Virginia whose premium and deductibles are skyrocketing in part because she didn't have maternity care, even though she said that she's had three children, she's going to have no more. Her third has got autism and is mentally retarded. And her care for him is going to go up by several thousand dollars a year now because of Obamacare. That's the kind of price increases we're seeing. That's the kind of price increases we're going to continue to see, in part because the website has been such a fiasco. Well, the fourth shock, which I don't think many of you will have seen yet, it's starting to be reported in some places all around the country, is the access shock. When you realize that the doctor you've been seeing for years, the clinic, the hospital you've been going to for years is not included in your plan. You may have heard the story of Edie Something from San Diego. She wrote about her situation in The Wall Street Journal a few weeks ago. It's been covered on the cable news. She's a stage four gallbladder cancer survivor, which is apparently a very dangerous kind of cancer that there are few people survive. She did so in part because her policy enabled her to get routine, regular care at her home hospital in San Diego, as well as covering the extraordinary procedures she needed at Stanford University and MD Anderson in Houston, two great cancer centers in our country. She now has lost that policy, and the new options give her a choice. She can have a policy that covers her routine and regular care in her hometown hospital in San Diego, or she can have one that covers her extraordinary care at her cancer centers. She can't have both. Now, we may not have quite the same impact here in Arkansas because of our anti-willing provider law and because of the structure of our market, but that doesn't mean that doctors are going to remain available to see you and your family when they get sick. As they continue to face lower and lower reimbursement rates, they may retire, they may sell their practice, they may go to a hospital, they may go to concierge-only practice where they only pay cash payments for rates that they negotiate themselves. This is going to be particularly acute for senior citizens. I look around the room, and I don't see anyone who's yet eligible for Medicare. But when some of you, when some of you reach that age in 15 or 20 years, you're going to find out, you're going to find out that Medicare increasingly will be a second-class group of patients. Senior citizens are going to be treated as second-class citizens. Obamacare cut $700 billion for Medicare. Now, some of its defenders say that was not a cut to patients, that was a cut to providers, doctors, hospitals, and so forth. I guess no one realizes that Medicare works by reimbursing doctors and hospitals and clinics to see patients. But also, of course, if a doctor gets paid less to see a certain type of patient, he's going to see that patient less. Many of you know that doctors all around Arkansas already see a very limited number of Medicaid patients, if they see them at all. Increasingly, they may start treating Medicare patients in the same way. And that's before an unelected panel of bureaucrats called the Independent Payment Advisory Board comes into being and starts dictating what procedures are going to be covered for what senior citizens at what ages. Again, this is not a flaw of Obamacare. This is the design of it. The president, remember, during this debate was talking about his grandmother and her hip or knee replacement at an advanced age, how we might need to have a difficult democratic conversation about that kind of procedure. Well, I can tell you what, my parents who are on Medicare, I don't want Barack Obama having a conversation about what kind of access to healthcare they get. I want that to be between them and their doctors and me and my sister. But if we don't do something to change Obamacare, then those conversations are going to be had, but they're not going to include anybody who's on Medicare, like we had my unelected bureaucrats in Washington, DC. So that's what I say is the four main kind of shocks under Obamacare. No doubt, there's going to be more coming down the road. I have long stood for repeal of this abominable law. I voted to repeal it. I voted to delay it. I wonder if Barack Obama would like to have a do-over on that one. I voted to defund it. I voted to repeal parts of it. When the man living in the White House is named President Obama, it's going to be hard to repeal the law called Obamacare. But that doesn't mean ultimately it needs to be repealed, and that doesn't mean there aren't problems with our healthcare system that we need to address. Those problems were present four or five years ago, what led to the political situation which Obamacare passed. And a lot of you are probably familiar with the cost of medical care before Obamacare, which is going up a lot higher now, the inability of certain people with pre-existing conditions to get access to healthcare, the unfair treatment of individuals or small businesses versus large businesses. We can't say that there's only one solution or no solution. It's not Obamacare or all the problems. It's getting rid of Obamacare and then solving the problems with solutions that are focused on patients and doctors and families that are driven by the market. And these are, say, very simple. Ernest Ronald Reagan used to say they may be simple, but they're not easy. But they are fairly simple. We can empower people to buy their health insurance across state lines, just like you already can do with your home insurance or your car insurance, if you buy from the GEICO or GECA or Flow or Progressive. That'll mean there's a lot more competition in the insurance markets. We enable small businesses to pull together in the same way that big business already has a large pool, so they have the same purchasing power in that insurance market. Give individuals the same kind of tax benefits that businesses did, so if they don't have access to employer care, they don't like their employer care, they are in the same tax situation as people who work at big businesses. We encourage more price transparency. I was told by someone that the exact same MRI and the exact same machine in El Dorado versus Texarkana had about a four or five times cost differential. If you're buying a truck in El Dorado versus Texarkana, it'd be like a 4 percent price differential would be enough to make you drive the extra hour and a half. But there's not enough price transparency in our health insurance and our healthcare markets. If we had more price transparency, consumers would be smarter shoppers, they'd get more value from their dollar. And for people with pre-existing conditions, states like Arkansas have high-risk rules that encourage people who are not in the insurance system already and don't have coverage to get into it, you know, with support. And then to have portability and renewability rules for policies, so if you move from a high-risk pool to an employer, or an employer to a self-employee situation, you can be assured that you don't lose your health insurance, even if you've had a downturn in your health. These solutions are all relatively simple. And once Obamacare is repealed, as I am confident one day it will be, we can implement these solutions and return to a world in which patients and doctors are making choices that are best for them. But as I said, it's going to be hard to repeal Obamacare when the guy living in the White House is named President Obama. So what can we do in the meantime? As I said, I voted to repeal, I voted to delay it, I voted to defund it, I voted to stop parts of it. Now that it's upon us, that the predictions of all the harm it would impose on individuals and families and businesses and our healthcare system are a reality, that millions of Americans are getting a cancellation notice in their mailbox, well... are getting a cancellation notice in their mailbox, well, now we have to try to do everything we can to protect as many Americans as we can from the harms of this law. That's why last week we passed a bill in the House, the Keep Your Health Plan Bill. Very simple. If you have a plan today, or there's a plan outside of Obamacare you would like today, you can buy it next year. You can continue to buy it in the marketplace after January 1. You should have that choice. That was a bipartisan bill. Thirty-nine Democrats in the House of Representatives voted for it, almost 20%, the entire Democratic caucus. I suspect come December that we may in fact have to consider another delay of the individual mandate, the penalty if you don't have health insurance as of January 1. Just think about it. Five million Americans have already lost their insurance. They can't get insurance because the website where they're supposed to shop is broken. And then we're gonna penalize them on January 1 if they don't have insurance. Even Al Franken, the liberal senator from Minnesota, has said recently that we might have to consider a delay of that penalty if things don't change rapidly, which they probably won't. It's hard to predict beyond that what might happen next, because it is hard to predict the immediate outcome on a week-to-week basis of Obamacare. But it's not gonna get better, it's going to get worse. And we have to be ready in the House, and I hope one day in the Senate, to enact targeted reforms that protect as many Americans as possible from the harmful consequences of this law, and that set the stage for an ultimate repeal and a return to a patient-focused healthcare system. One final point I wanna note, because I'm sure that some of you have seen it in the news lately, is about Obamacare in the United States Congress. Given all of these problems, it's not surprising that Congress would like to exempt itself from Obamacare. The law very clearly said that we were supposed to receive our insurance through the Obamacare exchanges, and Barack Obama, after special pleading from a lot of Democrats in the Senate earlier this year, had his bureaucracy issue a rule that said Congress could continue to receive its subsidy payment under Obamacare, approximately 75% contribution towards their insurance. Now, some people say, well, that's not an exemption, that's not a special subsidy, that's just the same employer contribution we've always received from our employer, the federal government. So that's fair enough, you know, that is, that is what has been happening for decades. But there has been something in the meantime that changes the status quo. That's something that's what I call Obamacare. And millions of Americans have lost their policies. They've seen their premiums go up two, three, four times, they've seen their deductibles go up even more, and no one is giving them a special break, no one is helping them with their subsidy. You've seen stories this week probably, saying that while you wait for hours on healthcare.gov, there's apparently a special website for members of Congress and senators and their staff. While you call into call centers and set new records for customer service dissatisfaction, that congressmen and senators and staffers have the ability to call in and get instant concierge line service. Some of you, if you've been on the exchanges in Arkansas, know that we have three, four, five, eighty-six plans in some regions, just two plans in other regions. Senators and congressmen and staffers will be buying on the DC Gold Plan, which they have 112 options. And of course, that will enable them to continue to receive their 75% subsidy. I don't think that's right. I sponsored legislation, voted for legislation to block it. I personally will not be accepting that 75% subsidy. Or I won't have to use any of these concierge-type services. And I'll continue to try to fight to make sure that all of Congress has to do the same thing and live under the same law that they passed and imposed on you, because it's a basic, I think, rule of fairness that we should have to eat or I'm cooking, even when our cooking is as bad as it is in the case of this law. So that is kinda where I see things standing with Obamacare. As I said, I wish I had better news after a crushing loss from the hogs today, but at least you came in here with measured expectations, I'm sure. I see Lisa is back here behind me with questions. Are you ready to start teeing up some of the questions here?
All right. First question is from Miss Davy Frenzer, is that her name? Hot Springs. And she asks, what hope is there for Medicare to be saved? Will people with disabilities lose their disability under Obamacare?
Okay, I'll take this question in two parts, Medicare and then the Disability Trust Fund, which is a problem in its own right. So as I said, Medicare is deeply damaged by Obamacare, and seniors, in my opinion, are gonna be treated as second-class citizens under Obamacare. It did cut $700 billion, when you add up all the different cuts between, say, Medicare Advantage Plans or vision payments to hospitals in rural areas, which by the way, Hot Springs is probably considered, in fact, all of Arkansas. In Washington's view, is considered to be rural, not just places like Arkansas where I live. And that is gonna have a real impact on Medicare. And it's also going to speed up the point where Medicare no longer is solvent, is no longer able to pay the reimbursements to doctors, which only continues the spiral of doctors not being willing to see seniors who receive Medicare. That's why we try to repeal Medicare, we restore that money, we extend the lifetime of the Medicare Trust Fund, so we can ensure that seniors, like my parents who are on Medicare, or those who are approaching retirement age, don't have any changes to their system, that don't have their benefits cut in the next decade, and that the next generation of seniors will have that program available to them. Coming to the second part of the question, you can actually see the future of Medicare and the Disability Trust Fund if we don't act to save it. The Disability Trust Fund, which is funded in part by your FICA taxes, it's part of the social security system, is slated to go into the red, I think in 2015, I think in less than two years, which means if you receive disability payments, if there's not a change, then you will likely start receiving some number of cents on the dollar, maybe 95 cents on the dollar, perhaps maybe 90, maybe 85 cents on the dollar. That's because that system is riddled with abuse and with waste. There's not enough protections in place to ensure that people are disabled, to ensure that people have not recovered from their disability, to ensure that people who are disabled truly cannot obtain any single job in the United States, which is the standard for disability. If we don't act to help address the solvency of that trust fund, the people who are in need of that support most are gonna be the ones who suffer, because there are a lot of people who truly do need disability support. They're not the ones who are drawing the trust fund down, it's the ones who are engaged in the waste and the abuse, using the rules of the system against the system itself. And unfortunately, that could be the future of Medicare, and a lot of other healthcare programs as well, if we don't act to reform them today, while we have time. People who benefit most and need those programs the most are gonna be the ones who suffer
From Mr. Ron Conspul. He submitted this via Facebook. He asked, if the ACA fails to sign up the required number of policyholders by 2014 deadline, what is the chance of imploding and becoming of no effect? Should we just allow it to take its natural course toward self-destruction, or will there be a need for full repeal?
So I think it's fair to say that Obamacare has crashed on takeoff. It's unclear yet whether the administration can put the pieces back together and get it flying again. It kinda reminds me, I don't know, if you've seen this in the news, some supersized cargo plane was supposed to land at McConnell Air Force Base in southern Kansas and landed a small airstrip instead, you know, probably comparable to Hot Springs Municipal Airport. And apparently had enough runway to land, 6,500 feet. But to take off, it needs 9,500 feet. So now it's just kinda sitting there, no one knows what to do with it. And I suspect that the administration feels somewhat similar about Obamacare, that they've been expecting for three and a half years that things would go great, and, you know, come October 2013, the American people would realize how blessed they are to have Obamacare. But, you know, that's okay, you know, their position is, there's no way we can possibly build this website in 36 months, 38 months, so that's the ticket, we're gonna have it all solved. I do think the website ultimately is going to get faster, and it's going to be built finally. I mean, you can just kinda brute force that. You can put enough tax dollars after it, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars would be spent, there'll be a lot of waste in that, and there will need to be oversight hearings in the Congress about what went wrong. But in the end, surely, even the federal government can run a website. It may take a long time, but surely they can, because that's the easy part. The rest of the law, as I've described it, that's where the problem lies, forcing people to buy products they don't want, or that they don't wanna pay for, making them take economically irrational decisions. And the enrollment numbers I cited at the beginning of the session, you know, when I said there's only been 100,000 enrolled by the end of October, when they needed 500,000, when they need 7 million net new enrollees, and they've already lost 5 million out of the system. This means that next year, we're likely to see even higher prices in both the exchanges as well as the smaller group and the larger group markets, as you have more and more sicker people in the system who aren't being supported by insurance payments from healthier people. So there is the real possibility that there'll be a debt spiral. Now, it won't necessarily impact the people on the exchanges, because they have caps on how much they contribute, but it will be a debt spiral for the Treasury, as we continue to pay out more and more subsidy payments, and for people who get their insurance through employers, as their premium payments go up. So there are some people who see that crash coming, and they say, you know what, just let it crash. Let it crash, and we'll try to repeal it after 2014 or after 2016. I don't personally take that view. I feel as an elected leader who serves almost 750,000 Arkansans, it's incumbent upon me, it is my duty to try to protect as many of my constituents as I can. That's why I voted for the Keep Your Health Plan Act last week, because we can have as many as 50,000 Arkansans who are losing their insurance, and that's part of the 5 to 15 million Americans who are gonna lose it. I feel that it's my responsibility to try to help and protect those people as much as I can, just like the people who are gonna lose their small-group plans, just like the people who are gonna see their premiums go up two or three or four times and have much higher copays and so forth, just like seniors who are gonna have longer waits or maybe complete loss of access to care. These are all problems that I'm not willing to just stand by and see inflicted on the American people because Barack Obama and a bunch of liberals in Washington wanna tell you how to run your life. Now, I don't know if any of those solutions will be accomplished in the next year, because the Senate, as you've seen time and time again, has stood lockstep with Barack Obama, refusing to do anything that would undermine Obamacare through new legislation. And it might be undermined by itself, but I, at least in Congress, have an obligation, in my opinion, to try to protect as many of my constituents as possible, and then if it moves across the Capitol Building and it dies in the Senate, as so much of our good legislation does, then, you know, the voters can sort that out.
My timekeepers have informed me that it is almost 4 o'clock. So since we got a late start, and I think that was probably my fault, we will do one more question, and let's try to keep it brief.
Yeah, we'll do two.
Okay, let's do two more questions.
It was my fault, 'cause I didn't tell her to get started.
So, that being said, if you all have more questions, please see me or one of our staff in the back, and we will make sure that you are able to submit your question, and we will get you an answer. All right. Betty from Hot Springs Village asks, are you working on legislation requiring all legislators and all bureaucrats to live under the same laws that are applied to the general populace? No exceptions, exemptions, or waivers?
Yes. I mean, I feel I've already answered that question in large parts. So I have sponsored legislation earlier this year, and I voted for it, that would require all members of Congress, all senators, all staffers to obey Obamacare, just as it was written, which means you go onto the exchanges, and if your income makes you eligible for a subsidy, if it's less than 400% of the poverty line, then you can receive that subsidy, just like any other American could. If your income is more than 400% of the federal poverty line, then you don't receive it, just like any other American would not. In fact, I also introduced legislation this week that says any member of Congress or senator who exempts his staff, or exempts her staff from those rules, has to disclose which staff he or she is exempted, because right now they don't. In fact, the regulation, just to spell it out, says that each individual congressman, each individual senator is entitled to say which staffer is part of his, quote, "official office." Well, I don't know what the unofficial office would be, 'cause I only have official offices. And so all my staffers are part of the Obamacare exchanges. Harry Reid has a lot of staffers who he claimed are part of his unofficial staff. They still make the same exact money, they do the same exact job they were doing beforehand. But we don't even know who's been designated as part of the official staff that has to obey Obamacare, except for that part of that, getting their 75% subsidy. The others that weren't designated, they just get to stay in the federal employee health benefit program, and we don't even know their identities. At a minimum, that should be disclosed, and the American people should know which one of their congressmen, which one of their senators are trying to gain the roles to protect their special friends who are working for them.
Last one. All right, this one is also kinda lengthy. See, this is from Tammy Teed of Hot Springs, and she asked via Facebook, I want to know why my state insurance, Blue Cross and Blue Shield, with pre-existing high-risk pool, was canceled, and if it is going to be one of the hopefully reinstated plans that the President of the United States promised? He's lying about so much, but I really need my health insurance and refuse to apply through Obamacare, and leave myself and my personal information up for hackers.
Want to say that I share Tammy's concerns about her personal information. You know, I will have to buy any kind of insurance plan that I might buy through the exchange, and I'm certainly not going onto the exchange shop right now. I did in early October, just because I knew that it would crash and I could prove a point. But I certainly wouldn't put my social security number, my tax information in there right now until I am 100% confident it's not gonna be stolen by Russian mobsters, and I'm gonna have my identity stolen and sold on the black market internationally. So the state insurance, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, high-risk pools were one of the solutions I mentioned that we can implement after Obamacare is repealed, but Obamacare is designed to eliminate high-risk pools. It is designed to move those people out of Blue Cross and Blue Shield, high-risk pools, or whatever your state provider is. I mean, Blue Cross, Blue Shield has the dominant market position here, other states have different insurance providers that are facing the same situation, and move them into Obamacare, where they will, once again, pay a higher premium, have a higher deductible, have more cost-sharing requirements, and probably have a lot of services that they don't want and that they don't wanna pay for. The President's so-called fix, which I can tell you, he only did on last Thursday, 'cause he was worried about the legislation we were about to pass in the House on Friday, I mentioned we did it with 39 Democrats, it would've been about 100 Democrats if he hadn't have had that press conference last Thursday. All he says is that insurers are allowed to sell policies to the same people that have them for one more year. I mean, I could put this in a lot of ways, but I'll borrow a analogy from Steve Stalise, a colleague of mine from New Orleans, who said about the President's decision, his regulations decision, the President's like the guy that burns your house down and shows up with an empty water hose and then criticizes you for how shoddy your house was to begin And then he says, you know what, I'm sorry I criticized you and burned your house down. You can live in it if you find someone to rebuild it, but then we're gonna burn it down in a year again. So we shouldn't thank the President, we shouldn't thank the President for this so-called administrative fix, which by the way, is much likely unlawful and beyond his authority to do under the statute, at least to do in the way he did it, there might be other ways he could've done it. Nor, you know, should we be surprised when insurance companies tell us, this rule was issued in June of 2010, it is November of 2013. We have been planning for almost three and a half years to cancel these policies because of the dictates of Obamacare and move these people into the exchanges. A lot of these insurers have laid off the people that were responsible for these policies. They don't even have jobs anymore. And, as I said, the catch-22 that all these people never find themselves again? They can't even buy insurance, 'cause the exchange website isn't working. So it's unclear what's gonna happen to the millions of Americans over the next few weeks who have lost their insurance and who can't get on the website. As I said, we might consider legislation to delay the penalty for people who don't have health insurance in January 1. I can't see how someone can take a different position once we know that they're not technically able to get on the website and buy the insurance. But that doesn't solve the problem of them not having insurance. Lots of people aren't worried about paying the penalty, they're worried about not having insurance, 'cause they've got a sick kid, or they've got a chronic condition themselves, and they've got a doctor's appointment on January 7, when people are getting back to work after the holidays. It's unclear what's gonna happen to them. We're gonna do our very best to try to ensure that they get the care they need, but there's no doubt that it's directed there's no doubt that it's a direct result of this abominable law. You want to do one more? One more?
Yes. Jim Hendrix asks, "What can you do to stop IPAB?"
The IPAB. So the IPAB is that board that I mentioned, the Independent Payment Advisory Board. It is a board of 14 or maybe 15 unelected bureaucrats, will be in Washington, who will set the dictates of Medicare procedural coverage, based on lots of different criteria, many of which we don't even know right now. And I would say it's also grossly unconstitutional, in part because Obamacare says, and I forget the exact timeline, but the IPAB will issue rules and regulations, Congress can only overturn those rules and regulations in one six-month period in 2017, and they have to do it with a supermajority vote, otherwise Congress can never overturn it. I can't think of many things that would be a greater affront to the basic structure of our constitutional system than one Congress years ago trying to empower a set of bureaucrats and preventing a future Congress from overturning a law that's hurting the American people. The most important thing we can do right now is simply repeal the IPAB. I'm a sponsor of legislation that would repeal the Independent Payment Advisory Board, that would strip it of its powers, and prevent it from restricting the kind of procedures that has always been available to Medicare beneficiaries based on their doctor's best advice. That's legislation that has bipartisan support. It's another example, as I said, of a shock that's only beginning to be felt and will continue to be felt in the future. And you've seen the kind of political blowback the President and his liberal allies have faced over the canceled policies over the last month. So some people say, "Tom, you know, you can't repeal Obamacare, you certainly can't repeal some of the key parts, like the mandate or the IPAB." I would say, just a week and a half ago, the President and his press secretary and his senior administration officials were calling policies on the individual market substandard. They were saying that, you know, they're sold by bad apple insurers, they were saying that it was the Wild West and they deserved to be eliminated. And then last Thursday, the President did a 180-foot block and said, "Nope, you can keep those policies if your insurer will offer them, they won't be able to buy them anymore." So I wouldn't be surprised if in December, as I mentioned about the individual mandates, you have a lot of the Obamacare coalition in the Senate and in the House breaking ranks and beginning to support that reform. I wouldn't be surprised when senior citizens begin to feel the consequences of those $700 billion cuts to Medicare and the Independent Payment Advisory Board, that they begin to birthburns as well. Remember, 39 of them already did in the House, lots of them in the Senate would like to, Harry Reid would let them. So the simplest thing we can do about the Independent Payment Advisory Board is pass our legislation to repeal it. And it may seem difficult today, but two weeks ago seemed difficult, pass legislation that would let people stay on their health care plan if they liked it. So don't be surprised if you see that in the future. All right, I see my staff in the back telling me I've got to get out for my next engagement. I want to say thank you all for coming out. If you have any personal matters, you know, constituent service problems within the agencies, we've got staff in my congressional office as well, we want to respect your privacy, that they can take your information and give a privacy waiver for you. Again, thank you all for coming out on a Saturday. Thank you. Thank you.